Now we have an opportunity for call to the public. If anyone is here would like to speak to us tonight, please approach the microphone, turn it on, give us your name, your address, and you have three minutes. I'll let you know when you got 30 seconds left with the yellow and when time's up with the red.
Turn on, tune in, and David Gordon, Helena Road. Briefly, I only have a couple of minutes, so I wanted to talk about the rules that you're considering regarding the master plan. And I've been thinking about government and voting and why some things are a simple majority, others are two-thirds. And in this community, historically, we've had a six-to-one vote on the master plan from the Planning Commission in terms of recommendations because it's supposed to be a consensus document. There's not supposed to be a bunch of disagreement about it. And it's supposed to be a document that kind of sits above politics. It's not supposed to change with every election cycle. That's the whole concept of a long-term plan. And what came to me is that changing from six-one to a four-three vote is kind of a radical departure from what we've had historically. And I know that this Planning Commission and members of the public have been working diligently to try to attract both residential and commercial growth to this community. And when I listen to the news a lot of times, what I hear is that what the business community really dislikes is uncertainty. And if you want to attract people to invest here, both commercial and residential, I think you want to give them something that's not going to change with the political wins every four years. And that's what a master plan is. So I would like to recommend that you take a look at even your Roberts Rules of Orders here, where there's numerous requirements for a two-thirds vote. You even need a two-thirds vote within your own bylaws to change a procedure, which is obviously less important than a master plan. So I would urge you to consider a two-thirds vote. I mean, you could have a situation where you have a simple majority, where if there was just a minimum quorum of four people, you could change the master plan with only three votes. I don't really think that's in the best interests of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak about a mechanical issue that's not part of my three minutes? When you all speak directly into your microphones like you're concentrating on it, we can hear out there pretty good. When you're leaning back and talking over here and you're back a little ways, you guys disappear. And the conversation kind of comes and goes. And you have a really lousy sound system, so... Just a comment. If you could address the microphones a little more directly, it would be a lot easier for us, all three or four of us, to hear you. Thank you. I'm ready.
Go ahead.
My name's Craig Warburton. I live at 450 West Joy Road. I continually get a little perplexed by how rapidly things seem to want to change. The bylaws are less than two years old. They're a year and 10 months old. They replaced bylaws that were 20 years old. They were authorized by everybody but one person that's here. I think they're a meticulously-produced document, frankly. Just like I'm, you know, equally enamored with the master plan, which is equally in its infancy. Sorry about the sniffles. I have an awful cold. But I have some comments. You know, in October, Ms. Du Michele prepared a wonderful document that was missing any kind of an opinion, and it was just research, and brought it to this meeting and was stopped. I don't know if you all have even considered the depth of information that was in that packet after the presentation was no longer allowed to continue. And it was information from Michigan Planning -- Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Open Meetings Act, Michigan Association of Planning, Michigan State University Extension, Michigan Municipal League Planning Commission Handbook, a lot of information that maybe is a little more grandiose than this space here and what we're up to. I mean, there are thousands of townships, even in just the state of Michigan. You know, in October, township attorneys had to leave them alone, or at least change them in the manner in which they're written. There are things in there that don't make any sense to me. You initially reference the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And then you contradict it four or five times in your changes. That act provides for a two-thirds to three-quarter majority to change zoning. You can't do a simple majority. It's specified in the Enabling Act. You can't not use the newspaper. It's specified in the Enabling Act. I don't understand how you can specify you're going to -- the source for your authority and then ignore it. I read the document. It's really kind of complete. And, you know, frankly, there's a lot more there than meets the eye. There's a lot of stuff in there that I didn't really get about development rights and things going back and forth, but, you know, you can't... You know, putting it in the newspaper is not an absurd idea. I read a newspaper. Many, many people do. It's available digitally all week long. You get a lot more notice out of that than you do stapling it to the front of the building and putting it on the website. The notion of the simple majority to change the zoning map is absurd. It's illegal. You can't do that. I'm sorry. If you try to, we're going to fight it. You just can't. You've got to have two-thirds or three-quarters. It says so in the ordinance. And when it comes to the not specifying Roberts Rules of Order, it's not appropriate to make your own and call it Roberts Rules. There are things in there that are flatly inaccurate, not part of Roberts Rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak to us tonight? Seeing no one, okay. We can move on. I guess I would like to mention one thing. I don't believe what we were discussing was going to be changing. We still have to do our posting, our public notices, and that has to go in the newspaper. That is required by the Michigan -- the Enabling Act. But our bylaws would not require that posting in the newspaper. Am I correct with that, Mr. Michele? Okay. So everything else, it will go into the newspaper because that's required for us to do that? Just to clarify. Okay, I'm moving on to correspondence. I don't have anything. Do you... Anyone else? No? Okay. Board of Trustees report. Ms. Chick isn't here tonight. ZBA, did you... We have a meeting?
We did not have a meeting.
Staff report. Do you have anything for us? Do we have any applicants in for us? No? Have we had any... Have we have any interest going on in the office for us? No? Okay, thank you. And then Planning Consultant Report. Mr. Michele?
Just that next week... Excuse me. Just that next week, we will be hearing from the county on the Washtenaw Preserve. And so Mary has copies of the site plan tonight. If you would like to take one, there's both the big ones and the little ones. I will have my report for you in your next agenda's packet.
Okay. All right. Okay, we have no public hearings. We'll move on to old business. The bylaws. You all had a draft of the bylaws with the updates that we had discussed at our last meeting in them. Did you want to talk about this at all, Mr. Michele? Or is it clear to everyone what has happened with this?
Maybe just a little bit. Let's see. The only things that were not precisely as we discussed were... Marlene and I heard differently the wording for... That had to do with the capital improvements plan. And so if we would all look at Section 4.7 on page 5 of 14, I heard just the text in red, and Marlene thought that the text in blue was also included. So if you guys could clear that up, then I think we would have everything as set.
Mr. Stanalacho?
And that was one of the sections that I wanted to go over anyhow. I think the wording of this, the way it's presented right now, is very convoluted. I think something better clarified, sort of along the lines that the PC, the Planning Commission, may contribute to the capital improvement plan. Of the township's public works, capital improvement... Let's see where it's... I just dotted it, so some of the wording is fine, but... And that should the Township Board of Trustees request this information? Because basically, we don't have any input into it otherwise. It's only if it's requested from us. Since they're taking that responsibility on themselves, they have... I would think that as long as they're requesting that information from us, we should be able to contribute that to us.
Right. And I thought that the... But the discussion was, okay, so then that's the situation now. The state law says that regardless, that your bare minimum responsibility is to, when you write a master plan, to figure out the capital improvements and to let the township board know that, because we're going to be asking them for money. Now, then the state act goes on to say, "You can configure this however you want in your community. The board can just do it," kind of thing. And I thought that when we had our discussion here, we said, "Well, that can change at any time. We want our bylaws to cover both situations." And that's why it says "in lieu of."
That was part of our conversation, that we wanted to address that so we wouldn't have to change the bylaws again.
You want to have it in there, though, even though it's not going to be?
Yes, because otherwise, we would have to change our bylaws if the Township Board decided to revert it back to the Planning Commission. It could happen every four years.
Right.
It could. And we don't want to be having to change this section just because of that.
All right. I just thought... Myself, when I read it, it just sounds convoluted the way it sounds. But, you know, I would say I'm just one person, so...
Are you okay with the Township Board may delegate this responsibility to the Planning Commission, leaving that in there?
Sure. I mean, that just makes total sense. They can do that anyhow, even if it's not in our bylaws.
They can.
So that's their decision, not ours. So...
Okay.
I mean, that's fine. I just thought that it should be cleared up a little bit better. But if you, you know, if you think that's fine, it's fine. On that same page, under annual report, it doesn't say down in there a date that the annual report is required. It just says one is required. Shouldn't we specify when it should be done for the Township Board on an annual basis?
You certainly can if you want to.
It used to be February was the date, I believe, in the old bylaws.
Do you feel that's reasonable? You've prepared it in the past?
I've done.
Is February appropriate, or is March more appropriate? What?
I'm just asking. There's just, you know, if we're going to have it, just put down a date down on there, because otherwise, it leaves it unclear what annual... When is it due?
During the month of February?
By March 1st?
By March 1st.
Prior to March 1st.
Okay.
Then the only other... Like, if there are no other... Did you have more comments?
Yeah. On the next page, which is page 6, under section... Well, the section says consult. It says, "In the adoption of the master plan, the Planning Commission shall consult with representatives of the adjacent townships, Washtenaw County Regional Planning Commission." Now, typically, we haven't consulted with all of them. It's not shall. It may...
No. We're required to notice them.
It's not saying... It's not saying notice it. It's saying consult with them. That's a difference of opinion.
Correct. And we are required to give them a copy of the plan and take their comments.
I understand that. And I don't think... I think it's just an interpretation of consultation, that's all.
So I guess my understanding of consult is that you ask for an opinion and then receive it, but it has no guarantee of action on it? Like, a collaboration would mean, or a partnership?
That's fine.
That's what I think.
I was just asking. It seemed like that was a mandatory... Something that was mandatory to have to do, is to consult with them, when in fact, it's just actually to notice them that we're going to be doing it.
No. At the end of the plan, we have to send them a draft and ask for their comments.
I understand.
So... Okay.
It's still noticing them that we're doing it and that we are going to... This is our final version, but that's fine. The next page is on page 9, under the definition for secretary. What happens if the secretary is absent or is missing? How are we going to handle filling that role? It's just not addressed. I mean, it's addressed for the chairperson and the vice chair, just not for the secretary. I think it should end up having at least some verbiage in there that somebody is going to be appointed during the meeting to fill that role.
Okay. Do you have any preference of who? Like, in some of them that I read, a role was a deputy secretary, so it would always be the same person, basically. You have a backup. Or you can say it always falls to the vice chair, or you can elect one at the beginning of the meeting, or...
I don't care. It was just something that I caught that there's no clarification on.
I think falling to the vice chair is a pretty clean way of doing it.
Could. Or the chair could just appoint somebody at the beginning of the meeting also. If the recording secretary's not here...
Well, there are other duties down on here, too.
There are other duties.
That aren't just about the minutes, that we're going to be having a secretary do. So if they are not... If I'm not here, or whoever's going to be secretary, there should at least be something in here about how it's going to be handled. Somebody's just appointed during that meeting?
Sure.
That's what you guys want to do. Like, this, you know, this is however you guys want to do it. I might say, pick a person and stick with that person, or a position, so that then we don't have to take up any meeting time for it. The secretary's not here, great. The vice chair, or not.
Well, if the vice chair's not... And then... Then what do you do? I guess my recommendation is whoever's chair in the meeting, just appoint somebody.
I think that's easy.
Got it? Okay.
Because if the chairperson wasn't here, the vice chair wasn't here, someone is appointed to chair the meeting.
The secretary. And then, you know... Okay.
That's what I was saying, that having somebody appointed during that meeting.
Okay. Okay.
The next section, under regular meetings, there is a section in there that says amended to 1898, which I think should be removed.
You are correct. I'm sorry. Where are we? I was still writing last time.
Oh, it's under... Same page, under regular meetings.
8.1.
8.1.
Ah.
Says amended to 1898. That should be removed. And then schedule... The next line, "Schedule of regular meetings for the forthcoming year will be approved during the December meeting."
Instead of determined?
Right. Because that's what we're going to do, is we're going to be approving that. No, but for clarification for canceling meetings, there's just one line in there, that chairperson... I have small print here. "In consultation with the secretary, may cancel a meeting for lack of agenda." Well, how about if the whole board determines to cancel a meeting at a meeting prior to that? There should be some verbiage in there so that that's handled, that if the whole board, since it's approved by the whole commission, the actual meeting dates, if the whole commission decides to cancel that, that should be at least listed down on there. That's how it's done.
So you're saying, "Or by majority vote at any regular scheduled meeting?"
Yep.
Okay.
What article is that? I'm sorry.
That was...
Top of page 10.
It was still under 8.1.
Right.
Section 8.8, which is on page 11, says, "Motions shall be restated by the secretary before a vote is taken." That whole section is actually a repeat of Section 7.3, because it states down in there is that the secretary is going to be restating Planning Commission motions made prior to a vote.
Do we even need 8.8?
I would say no. It's a repeat.
Well, but then you need to make sure that the name of the maker and the supporter of the motion...
They can go under voting.
Or you could remove that the secret... You could remove restating Planning Commission motions made prior to a vote, number E, under Section 7.3, and...
That's fine. Whichever.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll work, too.
Okay. So wait, which one? Remove E under 7.3? Got it.
Yeah, that'll work. On the next page, number 12, on page 12, under voting, the section that was put in there, that you put in there about before casting a vote upon a matter of a member who may reasonably be considered to have a conflict of interest... I believe we went through and talked about that, is that we don't really have the ability in order to determine what malfeasance office ends up being. Because under the definition of malfeasance office is that it's actually an unlawful act, and I don't believe that we have the ability to determine what's an unlawful act.
This section came right from the straight act... The state act. I mean, it's copied and pasted.
That is in the state act?
Okay. Let me read it, because there's one sentence that I might have stuck in the middle, but let's read the state act together. Okay, so I'm going to read from the state act. You guys follow along on what we have in the bylaws. "The legislative body may remove a member of the Planning Commission for misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance in office upon written charges and after a public hearing. Before casting a vote on a matter on which a member may reasonably be considered to have a conflict of interest, the member shall disclose the potential conflict of interest to the Planning Commission. The member is disqualified from voting on the commission..." Oh, I'm sorry. "...the member is disqualified from voting on the matter if so provided by the bylaws or by a majority vote of the remaining members of the Planning Commission. Failure of a member to disclose a potential conflict of interest as required by this subsection constitutes malfeasance in office. Unless the legislative body by ordinance defines conflict of interest for the purposes of this subsection, the Planning Commission shall do so in its bylaws."
Has the Township Board determined what that definition is?
Of malfeasance? The state act determines that failure to disclose potential conflict of interest is malfeasance.
I'm just asking, is it... Because that was a section, when I read that, that was a section that was missing. It's not in here, is that unless the Township Board has determined what that definition ends up being? Is that what it stated? Last line?
Mm-hmm. "Unless the legislative body by ordinance defines conflict of interest for the purposes of this subsection, the Planning Commission shall do so in its bylaws."
Has the Township Board done that, or do we know that?
No. The Township Board has specifically delegated that responsibility to the Planning Commission.
All right. Okay.
Okay. Oh, since we're on voting, though, I would still like to make my concern known about the affirmative vote of a majority of commissioners for the adoption of the master plan. I would really like to see that be a two-thirds, due basically to the importance of the document and the trust that the Board of Trustees places on the Planning Commission to produce a document that is overwhelmingly approved by the group. So I'm not saying everybody has to approve it. It was unanimously approved last time and the prior time, but I really would hate to see it just go down to a simple majority. And I think at least five members out of seven would be appropriate for approval of the master plan. So I'm going to state my opinion there about that, and I would hope that some of you would reconsider and we could change that to two-thirds. Mr. Stanalacho?
I just wanted to point out one other section that I looked at. It says, "Under voting, roll call votes will be recorded on all other matters before the commission besides agenda, recess, and adjournment." Thing is that we use voice vote for the most part unless a roll call vote is either required by law or requested by somebody on the Planning Commission. So is that typical, right? We do... I mean, either that or we're going to have to do everything on a roll call vote, which doesn't matter to me if everybody wants to do that, but...
Well, roll call votes are certainly required when we're deciding on applicants, you know...
Yeah, certain things are required under the state law.
Required, yeah.
But most of our stuff that we do, unless it's required like that, is done just by voice vote.
He's right. That's what... Otherwise, we would have to start utilizing the roll call vote.
Okay.
I would just say that put in language that, you know, all of our actions are done with roll call vote unless required... I mean, voice vote, unless required, a roll call vote is required by law or requested by someone on the commission, or one a member of the commission.
I thought on that topic, it came down to the ability to discern how an individual had voted. So if you had a vote and it was a four-three vote, and you couldn't... And you or the public could not discern who the four were and who the three were...
Somebody could still request that.
Anyone can request... Anyone on this board can request that it be a roll call vote. But, you know, the intent of that is the ability to discern. So if you have a six-one voice vote, I mean, you know, that vote, it's easy to discern who the one was.
It doesn't matter to me. I'm just pointing it out, is that it's not how we've typically been, you know, acting. So if you want to leave it, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. I'm fine with leaving it, and we'll do more roll call votes in the future.
I just wanted to point that out, because I know it's not how we've been typically doing things.
Do I have it right that we're leaving it?
We're leaving it. Are you finished, Mr. Stanalacho, with your comments?
Nope, I have one or a couple more, just under the amendment section. It's page number 13. It's stated as rules of procedure, but we refer to this whole section as our bylaws. So I would just like to have that be called bylaws. In that, the line third down where it states, "Provide that notice of the proposed alterations, amendments, and repeats shall be submitted by mail to all members of the commission at least 15 days before the regular or special meeting of the commission, at which they are to be considered." I think that should be deleted, because anybody that's going to be on this commission is going to be... We're going to be discussing this, and having it sent by mail seems to be kind of redundant. I don't see the sending something by mail to everybody that's here talking about this makes sense.
I could think of an instance when we weren't... Well...
Everybody's going to be notified about it, you know, in our board packet anyhow, so...
I would...
I mean, we have notification. We're the ones asking for the bylaws to be amended, so why should it be sent by mail to everybody?
It also needs to be posted, you know, so there will be more opportunities. I'm just concerned about somebody not getting their packet for some reason, or being on vacation for some reason, you know, or some reason why somebody on the commission wouldn't get it. And, I mean, I have to say, my mailbox got full last week. The Township email, it got full. I wasn't able to send or receive, and I have to get that straightened out. And I'm sure it happens to some of the rest of you, too. The mailbox gets... Your mailbox gets too full, and then you don't get notified about things. So I guess I have a concern about that.
My point is that we're discussing changing this. Having it in there that it has to be sent out to us by mail 15 days beforehand seems to be a cost that doesn't seem to be... Need to be incurred on the Township, and seems to be kind of redundant, since we're the ones deciding to change this.
Right. I think if it were confirmed that everyone got it, whether by email or at a meeting, then I would be comfortable.
Well, you certainly can't confirm at all or depend on the fact that the mail was delivered and that the person got it.
Well, that's true.
That's... I mean, I'd depend on email way before I'd depend on the U.S. Postal Service mail, as far as confirming that someone got it.
Well, somebody could reply. Like, if I sent an email out and I said...
Right. Email's a little bit more reliable than...
Right. As long as there's a way to confirm that everyone got it.
I'm just saying that, to me, that seems to be... The people here are discussing this, and they have certain notice of that this is going to be taking place. I mean, they're on vacation, still know... They should still be following what's happening here, even though they're gone, even when they get back. I'm just saying, in my opinion, I think that section, those three lines should just be deleted, or replaced with something else.
Okay.
Okay. For what it's worth, I disagree. I think that the cost of, like, seven stamps every two to 20 years is worth the documentation piece of mind for the planning commission being able to say, look, the notice was put out, it was, the procedures were followed. I mean, I think it's for your protection as a planning commissioner, so say, I don't know, your mom's sick and you don't make it to two or three meetings in a row, and then by the time you get back, the bylaws have just been changed, and maybe not in a way that you want. I don't know. I think that it's a pretty small requirement, and it's for your protection. That's just my opinion.
Even if they had been gone from those meetings and they came back and the bylaws were changed, they still didn't have a vote in it. They could still get a copy of it afterwards, because by that time, it doesn't matter. If they're going to have any input in it, they should be following it along the lines. These are positions we asked in order to be appointed to. So somewhat, that comes with the responsibility of keeping up on the things that are going on, even if you're not here. And this requirement, I think, by mail was probably put in there 20-some years ago before there was email or electronic documents that were available. So I'm just saying that it's, to me, it seems like it's something that's redundant, since this body's asking for the bylaws to be changed in the discussions taking place here.
Sure, okay.
That's just my opinion, so...
Okay, can I hear some other opinions of other commissioners? Mr. Roman?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, what I, I'd like to back up to, like, 7.3, the secretary duties. I don't really see a need that anybody be appointed in the absence of the secretary, because if you're absent, or if the person's absent as secretary, there's really none of these duties that a person could take care of, other than E., the new E., restating planning commission motions made prior to the vote. And I think something should be added there, for instance, an absence of the employed recording secretary, because when we do have a motion read back, it's typically the employed recording secretary. So if you add that, you know, I don't see a need for anybody filling in as a secretary for a meeting, so it doesn't seem to concern me, really. The other thing is, the, I'm really, I don't really care, one way or the other, about the 15 days mail or otherwise. I don't think it's that important, I mean, which way you get notified. I think the intent is that the 15 days prior is the more pertinent issue in the matter. But myself being one of the persons that at last meeting voted regarding changes in the master plan being a majority vote, I was unaware, I think, at that time, that the act is two-thirds, or not?
It's, so, there wouldn't, and I'm not as familiar with the zoning act as I am with the planning act, but the planning...
Hello? Sorry.
But it's the planning commission that, like, a master plan is not zoning, it wouldn't be covered under the zoning enabling act.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So we need to figure out what we're going to do with the mail notice.
Yeah, question?
Oh, yes, Mr. Bluzenow.
I mean, it just says the word mail, it doesn't say postal mail, it doesn't say email, and the argument about someone being away from home, you're more likely to get your email away from home than you are get your mail when you're away from home. So I don't think that it's confining us to postal notification at all, at this point, the way it's written. And so I think it can be either or both, quite honestly. And my only other thing is, I'm back up to the very first thing we started talking about here, about the capital improvement plan. I don't understand what that thing says, for the life of me. So I either need to be learned how to read this, or help understand what it means. Because in lieu of, and then the word contribute seems out of place there. I'm not quite sure what's happening there, if someone can clarify that for me.
I think if it's at the end of improvement plan, you know, in lieu of the township board, in lieu of the township board accepting responsibilities for, and the preparation of a capital improvement plan, you know, the planning commission shall, or may, or shall, actually, contribute to the township's public works capital improvement plan.
Okay, so they're referring to the planning commission there, not the board?
Correct.
Okay.
At least that's my understanding, is that correct? 4.7, so in lieu of the township board accepting responsibility for the preparation of capital improvement plan, the planning commission shall contribute to.
Okay, that helps understand what's going on there, because it didn't make any sense to me.
Does that help?
Yeah. I was with you there.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, it sounded convoluted when you read it.
It does, I don't like the words "in lieu of," but, but that's just me.
Right, so what that means, what it means, read that way, the township board normally is accepting responsibility for preparation of the capital improvement plan, however, the planning commission may be contributing to it and/or assigned that duty by the board, correct? Is that how that reads, I mean, I understand?
If the township board doesn't do it, we're required to do it.
Oh, is that right? Okay, now...
That's what that's saying.
That doesn't sound like that's what it says to me in there.
Yeah, because in lieu of them doing it, the planning commission shall do it.
Oh.
We shall contribute to.
Oh, contribute or produce?
Actually, shall actually do the plan.
That's true. We're not contributing, we're, we shall do it, if they don't.
Yeah, produce, yeah.
Okay.
That's why I brought that up earlier, it didn't sound, something didn't sound right to me, so...
I guess that's why we're back here again.
And then I guess my last comment, I think that, I think I would go along with Marlene and that, the thought on the amendment question, number of votes necessary, I wasn't here at last meeting, so I apologize for that. Six votes seems kind of restrictive. I do agree that five out of seven, now, I guess, how does that play out if it's, if you have less than a full, a full commission? If you have, is it based on a two-thirds?
It's listed as a majority.
Right, right now it is.
Yes.
But there was, before it was an exact number of six, right, you had to have, and now we're either saying two-thirds, or are we saying exactly five?
Maybe we should just say five.
We took a vote on that last time.
We did.
We took a vote on it, and it came out majority, and then that's why it was put in here as a majority, and I'm just bringing it up for reconsideration. And, you know, now that we've had a couple weeks to think about it, I'm just bringing it up for reconsideration for the group.
So there's no motion on that right now?
There's no motion, but I could make a motion. I make a motion that we have a minimum number of five commissioners approving a master plan amendment, or a master plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'd like to raise a point of order.
Yes, Mr. Dignan.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure you can make that motion.
How come?
Because you're overturning a motion that was made at the previous meeting, and I believe the only person that can do that is the person that made that previous motion. I believe that is, that is the way it is stated within Robert's Rules of Order, if that's what we're going to follow. But that, in order to overturn a motion, I believe the only person that can do that is the person that made the original motion.
Actually, I think it's somebody who voted in the affirmative. And I voted no, so, well, but we're not actually, we're not actually approving it tonight anyway, but I just would like it to be a clean draft for when it's posted, for our final vote. That's why I was bringing it up. Do I have anybody here who voted yes on that, who would be interested in making a motion to change it to five? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on. Mr. Michelle, do you have enough direction to clean up that capital improvement section in the bylaws?
I'm not sure that I do, but here, let's read back what I'm planning on.
Okay, yes.
In lieu of the township board accepting responsibility for the preparation of a capital improvements plan, the planning commission shall create a public works capital improvements, oh, no, shall, I, so I'm going to have to think on this a little more, I thought you could just add, substitute create a for contribute to, but then that doesn't quite, it still needs to be shuffled around a bit. Containing, shall create a public capital, public works capital improvements plan containing all projects identified in the master plan, including public needs, estimated cost, and proposed method of financing. Okay. And then, do we keep the sentence about the township board may delegate?
I don't think so.
It's redundant but clarifying, I feel.
But we don't have any, it's our rules, and the township board can give it to us, and we don't have a choice on it, so...
It's certainly them delegating, it's us doing it or them taking it.
Correct.
We either do it, or they take responsibility of it. It's not, they do it, or they delegate it.
Right.
Okay. The only thing I have left is the question, the discussion on Robert's Rules of Order, but that's the very last thing, are there any more comments on any other portions?
I don't have any, Mr. Stanulichow?
The only thing I have about this is that, if we're going to end up using Robert's Rules of Order, in general, you should end up having somebody that's a parliamentarian, which has always been the issue, about using Robert's Rules of Order. You have to have somebody that's a matter expert of it, otherwise you're flipping through the book trying to interpret that. So I have some wording that I wrote down that may end up being considered. The planning commission and advisory committee meetings are guided by the principles and procedures found in Robert's Rules of Order, rather than having to actually follow them and have a parliamentarian. Because we basically do it anyhow, in doing an agenda and having a chairperson, going through those things, are following the guidelines of Robert's Rules, but we're not bound to actually have a parliamentarian then, so long as any of these are not contrary to any of the existing laws of the state of Michigan.
I don't know how I will state this, did you all take a look at the Robert's Rules simplified that Ms. Chick passed out? It's certainly very clear, I mean, it may, it is easy to figure out what you're doing from there. Mr. Dignan?
I'd like to request that, if this fees is board, that we move the discussion for Robert's Rules to our next meeting. The document that I was going to provide you with, I found, I found it last night, but I took it to the dealership in a different car, so I don't have it here today. You know, I'd like to provide that to the entire board to look at, and maybe continue the discussion at their next meeting, if that's okay. If not, that's fine, we can move forward, but I just, this is a discussion, I think, worthy of finding something that we can hold to. You know, once we adopt it, we can, we can hold to it, and it will work.
Does anyone else have any comments about Mr. Dignan's offer here? I would be fine with that, since we're not hot to change this, I mean, it's not going to happen at our next meeting. It has to be posted in the newspaper and everything else, so we do have a little more time to consider these two documents, but I appreciate it coming out, we can email it out immediately.
Right, because I can get it to you tomorrow. The one thing I will say is, in our, let me go back to page 13 of our bylaws? And this is just a thought, I sit on a couple boards where each year, at the beginning of the year, or the organizational meeting of the year, we vote to continue to utilize, you know, various parliamentary procedure documents for that year. And that way, we don't come back and address our bylaws if something changes. Robert's Rules of Order has a lot of versions, it's always, you know, there's always a change. So if we were to change in parliamentary practice, that for meetings of the commission and advisory, the rules of parliamentary practice shall be adopted at the organizational meeting each year, and shall govern in all cases, we then aren't tied to a specific set, you know, in our bylaws, so that if a new version of Robert Rules of Order come out, or there's a change, or we decide to use some other governing document to utilize our parliamentary procedure, we don't have to go and modify our bylaws to do so. Each year at the organizational meeting, we can choose to do that if we'd like.
Say the terminology again, please.
I said, if, in each...
No, no, I know, but the change you wanted to make...
Well, what I'm looking at is, in parliamentary practice, for meetings of the commission and the advisory committees, the rules of parliamentary practice shall be adopted at the organizational meeting each year, and shall govern in all cases in which they are not, you know, basically filling that blank out with, shall be adopted at the organizational meeting each year, and shall govern.
I like that, because it covers, it covers it without us having to change the bylaws.
Okay, Mr. Stanulichow?
I just have a question to everyone here on the commission, is that, I know a lot of the governmental agencies like to say that they follow Robert's Rules for some particular reason, but the reality is, Robert's Rules is a set of guidelines on how you conduct your meetings, and how you conduct yourself at your meetings. And that's something that internally, we should be doing anyhow. You start going through a book, and somebody could actually utilize things in the book that other people have no clue that's in there, to either stymie a conversation, stop the conversation, you know, get it guided in a different direction. And that is the problem that I've had with Robert's Rules, it's been used like that before. And when we basically say that we're going to govern all of our actions and the way we conduct ourselves, using a particular set of guidelines like that, rather than using that, the ideas and our ideals as a principle is our guidance, it's almost like we need to have, it's like a rulebook nobody follows.
I understand what you're saying, and that's kind of one of the reasons I wanted to bring Spark Notes. It's a Spark Notes document that's highly condensed. It addresses almost every function of a board of our size. And potentially, you know, when we're talking about six pieces, or three pieces of paper back to back, that's a much easier document to grab and wrap your head around than it is that thick gold book we received when we were on this commission. And it's also why, with that changing, or if one of us finds a better document that would better suit us, you know, we can then adopt that the next year. I just, and I do understand what you're saying, you grab a book like that, and yes, someone with malicious intent can dig through there and find something to cause disruption in the regular business of the board. So, I think with this way, we open ourselves to be able to adopt the things and how it would work best for us.
Okay. Well, I would look forward to seeing what you have for us next time, yes. And go ahead and compare it to what Ms. Chick gave us. This is a very, very concise, clear opportunity also, so, okay, do we have enough? Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, so were we changing the language to shall be adopted at the organizational meeting? Or are we tabling, or are we postponing that whole discussion?
No, we're, I think, my intent was that we were moving forward with, you know, it shall be adopted at the organizational meeting. So therefore, we don't have to delay anything.
I support that.
Does that require a motion, just to throw that language in there, or you need some sort of agreement between?
No, well, this is not the final, our final vote on this, anyway, it's...
Right, but are we gonna have, open ourselves up to discussion and changes at that time when we do have a vote?
It would, hopefully not, but...
Right, so that's why we have it now.
But anyway, would you like, do you have something?
I'm in agreement with what he's saying. That sounds reasonable to me.
Yes.
Do we have a designated organizational meeting time, deadline, date?
It tends to be the first meeting in January.
Okay, is that specified somewhere as well? I didn't see.
It should, it certainly should be. It's when we elect our officers, so.
Is that, is that listed as our organizational meeting?
I don't know.
In here?
It's not, it doesn't list it as that term.
So if we add that item, what are the things that will happen at this organizational meeting? We will elect officers, we will adopt, um, governing procedures?
Well, yeah, right here, it says under article, on page eight, Article six point one, at the January meeting of each year, um, the planning commission shall elect from its membership, uh, chairperson, vice chair, secretary, and other officers. So we could put some, you can remove the amended thing out of there, too. So I'm sure we have those sprinkled everywhere, but...
I thought, I thought I got that one.
Anyway, um, we could call that meeting our organizational meeting somehow, add language.
At the January meeting of each year, the planning commission shall hold an organizational meeting at which it shall elect from its members.
Probably clarify, it's the first January meeting.
Well, um...
Could have two meetings in January.
At the first meeting in January...
Which will be called organizational meeting.
Or the first meeting in January shall be considered the organizational meeting.
At which the planning commission...
Time the planning commission will...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will do all these things, and... And what we just asked, and adopt... And adopt parliamentary procedures to be used for that year. I mean, you could add it up there, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll see another version.
The other version of what?
Again, when, you'll show us another one before it gets posted for public comment.
Yes.
Okay.
One, one last correction.
Sure.
Under the effective date, which is the very last page... These rules of procedure, I'd just like to have that changed, uh, these bylaws of the Northfield Town, for the Township Planning Commission.
Got it.
That's it.
Okay.
Good. Okay, moving on to the next item, then. We have our RTM zoning designation, our final review of the language.
So, um, not much change here. Uh, the two things we talked about last time are still there, removing uses E through J, and changing twenty-five percent to forty-nine percent. I was asked to find some definitions for those uses, laboratory business, industrial and scientific, and those definitions are on top. They came from the American Planning Association Planner's Dictionary, which is kind of a cool, um, resource. They don't make up the definitions so much as they've combed zoning ordinances and definitions and whatnot all over the country, and found some best practices. So they offered two or three examples, um, and I chose the one that I thought best suits Northfield Township. If you don't like them, I can find some more.
Will these go in the definition section of?
Yep.
The ordinance, okay.
Thank you for finding those.
Sure, of course.
Does anyone have any more comments about this RTM district? Nope. Okay, then we'll go ahead and post that for public hearing at our next opportunity. Okay, moving on to the calendar. These are the first and third Wednesdays of the month. Um, and that November twenty-third up there in italics looks just crazy to me, but the rest of it is the first and third, so, um, can I have a motion to adopt the calendar as presented?
So moved.
Was that Mr. Iaquinto? Did you, did you move?
I moved, yes.
Okay, I didn't. Mr. Iaquinto moved, and Mr. Dignan supported. Uh, any other discussion on this?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
And, and maybe this is me, but is December twenty-first a, a realistic date to have a planning commission meeting?
I looked at it, it's like, it's... I looked through all the dates to see if there's any conflict. I know, I know it's the weekend, or the Wednesday before the holiday, so...
Okay.
We could always cancel that, too.
Right. If we have an applicant, you know, we hate to cancel a meeting out from under them. Um, so, we'll leave these on here, and we can always...
I was, I was just asking, that's, that's awfully close to the holiday.
Yep. Well, so is July sixth, close to Fourth of July, too, you know, so it's, it gets difficult. Um, so anyway, so we have a motion by Mr. Iaquinto, support by Mr. Dignan, um, and I guess we should do a roll call vote, then, shouldn't we?
Yes, we should.
Okay.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
Ms. Chockley?
Yes.
Stanulichow, yes. Mr. Iaquinto?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Okay, passes. Next item, master plan review for Webster Township. So they are consulting with us on their, um, on their master plan by providing it to us. I hope you've all had a chance to read through it. Go ahead, Ms. DeMichelle.
Um, so, I read through the plan. It is, um, it's very focused on agriculture, on land preservation, um, and had, had some pretty interesting things to say about those things, just 'cause they're so interested in it, that I thought maybe we would like to talk about later. But the specific mentions of Northfield Township, um, that you, we may want to respond to. Um, the future land use map associated with the master plan shows an agricultural designation all along the shared border with Northfield Township. Um, our future land use map over there, along their shore, shared border, we have Ag to the south, and low density residential to the north, with that tiny little residential conservation area, which I think matches up with theirs. So, no big conflict there. Uh, Northfield Township is characterized as one of four, quote, "growth and development corridors surrounding Webster Township, specifically experiencing continuous growth along US twenty-three." Webster Township considers its commercial needs to be fully met by neighboring jurisdictions, including Dexter, Brighton, and Whitmore Lake, with Ann Arbor as the principal urban center. So, I don't think there's anything to respond to there, but they're putting us on notice that they are not interested in any commercial activity. Now, here, the plan states that urban density residential development, which exceeds one dwelling unit per three-quarters acre, will be limited to, basically to the areas in the northwest corner by Dexter over there, and then anything that is, that is anywhere near our public sewer. Because... They have no interest whatsoever in providing any kind of sewer, or allowing communities, like, you know, several parcel-based community sewers. No interest in that whatsoever. So if any development is going to happen in their township that is denser than septic requirements, basically, they're going to put that, put it as far to the borders, and one of those borders, as ours as possible. We can respond to that or not, but that's the plan. The density, the densities, specific densities that they know, don't quite match ours. Um, so where it says, "The plan states that, uh, the township will work with Northfield Township and other service providers to coordinate the timing, financing, and installation of sewer and water infrastructure to the delineated service, urban service area." Now, that sounds to me like, do you think they've read our sewer study report? Have we had any conversations with them about this? Like, I'm new here, I don't know. I don't know about that.
Howard would be the one to ask.
What's the question? Have we had conversations with Webster about sewers? No. Not that I know of. The only entity that we have conversations with on sewers is Green Oak Township.
What's the line, what's our west line? What's, is there a road?
I don't even think the sewers go to the west line of, uh, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you, Brad.
Yeah, what's our west line common to theirs?
Uh, I...
North-south line.
I believe it, Webster Township would be...
Is it Maple?
Huh?
What's the, are you asking?
Yeah, what road?
Road?
Yeah.
Is it Helmer, or is it one over? Is it Maple?
It's Maple.
It's Maple, well...
So it's a long ways away from our sewer, anyway.
It is. But the trailer park is not too far from the border.
What's it? What'd you say?
Modular home.
Our modular, manufactured home community. Although that is, uh...
There's not been any conversation that I know of with Webster Township. And if there was any dialogue with Webster Township, it would have to be an agreement. There'd have to be a legal agreement that would be set before I would think we would engage at that level.
But it seems like they're planning that if there is growth to their eastern border along the Northfield Township border, in the northeast, um, the sewer would come from us.
Correct. I think, so, I was wondering if there was a background, if there is no background or ongoing conversations, then I think they're just putting us on notice that that is the way they will be handling that.
That's obviously their plan, so they can put anything they want to in their plan.
Right. But it's our opportunity to respond, and so, you know, like, they, they would, it would really be in their best interest if, for example, we had no interest in that whatsoever. It's never gonna happen, and we're, you know, this is an example, a total example. We're not interested in it, whatever. We, uh, this is what the comment period is for. We might as well write them back and say, "That part of your plan doesn't work for us. You've made some plans for us that we don't agree with." So that's why we're talking about it. I would just take it as notice right now, myself, but unless we really disagree with it. So these densities, again, and again, this is their plan, we don't have to agree with it. And they, there is a mismatch. So when they're talking about recommended maximum densities within the urban residential district, they say, "Single-family detached is two-point-nine dwelling units per acre." Presently, our lowest density residential is, um, a half a dwelling unit per acre, or one dwelling unit per two acres. And they have single-family attached as four dwelling units per acre. Our, like, high-density residential goes all the way up to six to fourteen. So it's not, it's not quite a good match. I don't think we have to adjust it. I'm just saying that they have a different idea about what that development might look like.
They don't want apartments. That's what it comes down to, four dwelling units per acre. You don't want apartments, you don't want, you don't want, um, large centers of people.
Right. And they were pretty clear on that. And so then this other, um, there's one more, there was a transportation note. So Webster Township notes that Barker Road, oh, no, that was just saying that, um, these gravel roads do provide access to the Whitmore Lake community. But then, when they got to talking about north territorial, um, "This road functions as a primary road in that it carries regional traffic through Webster Township and connects the township with the US twenty-three freeway via the interchange one and a half miles to the east. The right-of-way should be expanded to one-hundred-and-twenty feet. Two driving lanes will be sufficient, however, turning lanes may be needed at the intersections with Jenny's, Webster Church, Mass. Roads, and Huron River Drive." So if we wanted to respond to that comment, either in support of it or not, we could. And then finally, one last item of interest was, it didn't, didn't say our name, but it did say that fire and police protection within Webster Township will have to increase to meet the needs of an expanding population base. Arrangements for these services at this time are perceived to be contractual with neighboring units of government and the county. So if we have any particular interest in that, now might be a time to be like, "Hey, we could offer you fire protection," or whatever it is. It wouldn't have to be worked out right now, it's just an opportunity for correspondence.
But is that really our business? I mean, that's really Board of Trustees issue, I would think, and...
Sure.
Not ours. Mr. Stanulichow?
That, that discussion already took place a couple years ago, about talking about regional fire and police services with a number of communities around the area, and nobody seemed interested in it.
And there's nothing in this that requires a response. I'm just raising the flag so that you guys see it when it comes by.
What do they do right now for?
Well, I think they're saying that they have sufficient capacity now, but they are anticipating some growth, and that they're kinda at capacity.
Who provides their fire?
I don't know the answer to that.
No, I don't know.
They have a volunteer fire department.
Webster Township does?
Dexter.
Oh, Dexter.
Dexter does.
So...
I'm wondering if Dexter is not providing Webster. I don't know if Webster does. You ever seen a Webster Township fire truck? Have you ever seen a Webster Township fire truck? No, I think it's Dexter and, and others that provide it. Mutual aid stuff.
Okay. So what is worthy of comment here? We need to enlighten them about our agricultural district.
Yeah, the only real inaccur, the things, the things that I will be including in the letter are to please correct, um, our, our densities that they have listed in their table. And I would like to see the housing study that they're, if they in fact do conduct it, I think that the results will be interesting enough to read. So those are the things that I would really like to put in the letter. Is there anything that we discussed previously that we would also like to add?
This is just a request. I'd sorta like to know what they did, they had a twenty-fourteen master plan survey.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder how many respondents they got. And, you know, so if we could have that information, that would be interesting.
I wonder the same thing.
Otherwise, I think they did a very thorough job on their master plan.
Yeah.
Reading through the whole thing. It was, it was very thoughtful, uh, art, you know, master plan, I thought, so. Any other comments from anyone else here about any of it? Okay. Okay, oh, we've got minutes next. Did anyone find any, any changes they'd like to make with the minutes from the last meeting?
There, there was a section in here, too, about, uh, lake overlay consideration. Did you have that in there?
You wanna go back? That's, that's after the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Oh, sorry.
Because it's under, we're out of order, but, you know, the, our, our files are out of order, but, sorry. Um, I didn't have any changes on page one or page two. Did anyone else find anything? No?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the November eighteenth meeting as presented. Support.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Iaquinto, support by Mr. Stanulichow. Any other discussion on that? Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, on to the overlay district.
So at this point, I think, um, I'm just trying to catch you up on the research that I've done. I have, uh, some suggested directions that will then require more research, and so I wanted to see that we're all on the same page before I go any further down that road. So, um, as, I think we've talked about a little bit before, I was asked to take a look at, um, cases that have come before the ZBA, particularly around, particularly involving residential properties around the lakes, where variance is required just to do some, like, you know, home improvements, the kind of investment that we want to encourage, not discourage. So, um, I found five cases that, uh, seven cases that I could give a good review to, and seven, two of which were a little bit unclear. Um, so just in looking at them, you know, so then the first question I wanted to know was, so the standards for a variance are very firmly tied to irregularities of the land, and a shoreline has a lot of irregularities of the land. So I was wondering if it was even... So I was wondering if it was even possible or how possible, like how, how big the variances had to be. So I reviewed the cases and it does look like, you know, they're due to irregularly shaped lots, um, due to placement of existing buildings in the irregularly shaped lot. The one where I really thought, oh, okay, well, now here's a good candidate for looking at the ordinance was, um, when the, the last, the last one I have bolded, 8077 Lakeshore Road, says that a 5% variance was requested from 30% lot coverage due to small lot size. Okay, fine. But the one that was granted due to prevailing built conditions in the surrounding parcels, that makes me think that we should write an ordinance that better reflects the built conditions so that we don't have to do that. So I had our terrific GIS analyst, I'm going to refer you to the last page with the map on it here. I had her get building footprints from Washtenaw County and to run GIS analysis to find out how many of the lots in those districts were too small, number one, and number two, how many of the buildings were in violation of the setbacks, like by percentage. So there was some really eye-opening stuff there. Some of this stuff we can fix, some of it we cannot. I draw your attention to, okay, so in Whitmore Lake, it's got the little isthmus that goes out there. Right underneath that, there's several tiny little parcels. There's some bigger ones, but there's several tiny little parcels. Next time, I will bring you the GIS of that. The property lines run right through the buildings. Okay, it's not even a matter of setback. The property lines run right through the building. So we cannot fix all of this. But we did try to take a look at, you know, where the problems were the most severe. You will see on this map that there, on the key, there's only three colors, red, yellow, and blue, but on the map, there are more colors. There's purple, green, and orange. That's because I set the transparency so we could see which ones were out of conformity in more than one way when the colors combine. And you can see that really a good chunk of them are out of conformity in more than one way. So that's the extent, that's the extent of the issue. In our nice table here, we discovered that the total number of non-conforming lakefront parcels ranges from 77 to 89% in the SR1 and SR2 districts. Okay, so hopefully we can do something about that. So here's my thinking on this. Um, non-conformity is due to both the setbacks and the minimum lot size and we're not necessarily finding the same things on the same parcel. So they're two separate issues. I got to thinking about the purpose of a minimum lot size since that has the greater number of parcels out of conformity. Um, and I did a little bit of research. I actually have this, I thought it was current research at first and I was very puzzled. It's this Planning Advisory Service note from April 1952, talking about the institution of minimum lot sizes and why they're a good idea. So, you know, there, there's no hard and fast rule. There's no correct minimum size. It's entirely contextual. So there is that, but it's important to have one because if you don't have one, then it, it's important to have one so that you don't get absolutely ridiculous building requests and lot splits and, you know, whatever. But for the building conditions, but, but the built conditions, they don't particularly govern. So that's minimum lot size. Setbacks ensure spatial separation. We have three kinds, front, rear, and side. The front ones are designed to protect you and your buildings from the traffic and those have to do with, you know, like the road right-of-way. The rear setbacks, their purpose is to provide a buffer between your built environment and usually it's your neighbor's built environment. So you're kind of trying to, um, first create open space and second, provide a buffer between the occupants and your side setbacks, um, do the same thing, provide a buffer between the occupants, but the size is smaller. I said this is primarily by convention and for convenience, but also because it's not serving purposes like providing open space or traffic safety and it does serve an important purpose of slowing or containing the spread of fire. On the next page, "From a practical legal standpoint, I think it's more important to get the setbacks right than the minimum lot size." This is because a provision in our non-conforming lots of record ordinance says that you can build a permitted principal structure and use on a lot that is too small in either area or width, provided that you meet the setbacks. So it's saying, "Hey, listen, if you have this lot, you community, if you created the lot of record, then, and you zoned it, then you've got to let somebody build something on it." You can't, you know, say that this, you can't let small lot size, but you can put up some rules about what they're going to build, but you have to let them build something. So that's why I think we leave the minimum lot size alone and we worry mostly about the setbacks. So, given this, here's my proposed strategy. Uh, minimize the street-side setbacks, the front setbacks, because lake properties, they have front and back and, you know, whatever. The street-side setbacks. So look at the minimum recommended or required along every road that, um, that has lakefront properties, that provides access to lakefront properties, and set those front setbacks, those street-side setbacks as low as we possibly can. Conversely, firm up the lakeside setbacks. So Whitmore, you know, our lakes are really important. This is for the lake and not for the convenience of anything else. It's for everybody to continue enjoying the greatest thing that the township has. So I would say be strict on the lakeside setbacks. Our natural features ordinance recommends a 25-foot vegetated strip. I mean, that's natural area. That's nothing built in it. Um, and a 50-foot setback for building, buildings and construction, uh, obviously, our lakeside parcels do not meet this. However, there's only 21 parcels which are not meeting the current 20-foot lakeside setback. And so that's one that I think should not be touched. That one should just be left alone and if we're going to dink around with it, we should do it and the other two. Implementing sliding minimum setbacks. This is really where the challenge is. I mean, the, this is really where the challenge is. It's trying to get, you know, as Ken was saying to me once, trying to regulate setbacks in places where the built conditions are such that the eaves already overlap. How are we, how are we going to do that? And so some of that, again, we can't fix here, but one thing that I thought made sense was that when I look at what we've set as standards for the SR1 and SR2 district, we've asked that about 30% of the width of the lot be reserved for setback. So if we're saying, okay, well, if the lot is smaller, can we, instead of adhering to this number that re, that is 30% of a larger number that doesn't apply to this small lot, can we instead say that the setbacks need to be 30% of the lot width? Maybe at the narrowest point where the building is. So that would need some firmer language, but that's my thought. That would remove half of the non-conforming lakefront parcels. And if we, just running the numbers, if we reduce that requirement to 25% of the lot width, um, that would reduce the total number of non-conforming side setback properties to just 39. But I would like to hear about the fire, hear from the fire department before we even think about that any further. Uh, the reason that I like this method is because it preserves the desired setbacks on parcels which are capable of handling it. So at first I was like, well, why don't we just make the side setback five feet around the lake? Well, because the 30% setback is more comfortable. Like, we don't, we don't like to live right on top of our, our neighbors and it would just take kind of one or two lot combinations with a five-foot setback to put something truly enormous and out of scale on the lakefront that I don't think anybody wants. And I don't think if you were the little house next to it, you really don't want an enormous, you know, thing just hanging over your property. So I think that the sliding scale addresses the problems with the smaller properties without creating, I don't want to call them opportunities, but I will, for the larger properties. And I would appreciate any comment. If, these are fine, I will get, I will apply some numbers to this theory and if we'd like to go in a different direction, that's okay too.
Do we have any, anyone who'd like to discuss any of these?
I guess my initial question is, so if we do this overlay zone and, and this is, does this, does this overlay zone then apply to non-conforming lots of record? Or do they become conforming lots? There's still non-conform, there's still non-conforming lots to our standards, but the, an overlay zone of this type would allow them to build within some special parameters because the lot is a non-conforming lot? Yes?
No, that doesn't have anything to do with it. The non-conforming lots of record is, I'm just citing it here. I'm not making anything up. I'm just saying that in my view, these non-conforming lots of record, nothing's, nothing we write here is going to change how we treat them because they are just specifically in another section. So my concern was, okay, well, I think here, here's how I got there when I was thinking. I was like, well, first, can we just eliminate the minimum lot size, especially in SR2? If it's number one, causing problems and number two, it's explicitly stated in the zoning ordinance that we have no intention of rezoning any more land into it. So I thought about that for a little while and I, you know, consulted some books and my boss and was like, no, eliminating the minimum lot size is just, it's not a good idea. It doesn't leave you any protection for that. And so that's when I got started looking at, you know, other portions of it. I knew there was a non-conforming lots of record section and that's when I realized that they are already protected in their own right. Did that answer your question? It doesn't make them conforming. Nothing in this makes a non-conforming lot conforming unless we just change the minimum lot size or moved it.
Okay, but, but the.
Sorry?
The lot size, you're, you're speaking of the lot width? Or the lot square footage?
Both are explicitly covered in the non-conforming lots of record.
Because it, it may be just fine in the square footage, but not nearly in the width.
Correct.
So the variance that they seek is al, always side yard, let's say always side yard setback for that scenario. How would implementing a sliding minimum setback, would that be an overlay zone or would that be a modification of the SR2 zone?
I would only do that around the lakes.
Okay, so we'd have a lake overlay zone that would say, if you are, if you don't meet the minimum lot width, then your property may fall into the, uh, the overlay zone sliding minimum side setback, which may provide you relief in not having to go to the ZBA for the ability to build.
Correct.
Or, or remodel.
Correct.
Right, or remodel.
Because that's, right now, I know that's holding back a number of, you know, individuals around the lake that would like to remodel, but the setback requirements are too stringent.
I know Mr. Fink and I have talked about this a little bit from time to time over the years, over the last couple of years.
I mean, what, I believe this would allow the scale of homes around the lake to be able to be improved and eliminate some of the cottage size. Is that correct?
That totally depends on the lot size. So on a tiny little lot, even if you build 70% of the width of it, you're going to get a tiny little place.
So I, I guess I have a few questions. Ken, may I?
Please.
Well, I, I was just going to remind folks that that lot size is a dangerous word to use because we have a huge number of properties, primarily on East Shore Drive, that lot size and square footage, they have a legal leg to stand on and have huge amounts. Some of these are one-acre parcels, but they've only got an eighth of an acre of land. They're one-acre parcels because their property lines are plotted as going halfway into the lake.
Yeah, but when we.
And we had a legal case in Northfield Township on Main Street, right next door to the old McFarland house. And he won. He said, they said, "You have every right to utilize that square footage in any zoning issue that you have to build when it came to, you know, the, you know, didn't have enough for square footage of X prop, on X property, but he did because his true property was half an acre in size." And it was, I, I don't remember if it was a property to the north or south of that property, but I know it was, it was there.
So I have a few clarification questions. So Leah, what are you implying that this section, 36-900, means?
That it's more important to get the setbacks right than it is to get the lot size right.
No, no, no. I'm saying, what does, what do you think 30 section-900 means?
That's what I was answering. Did you want something different? Sorry.
Yeah. Uh, what, what does, are you saying that there is no minimum lot size in the ordinance? I, I'm, I'm asking you to interpret this. 36-900, non-conforming lots of record.
Okay, so I think what it's saying is that you, community, if you have created a lot and you've given it zoning and that zoning allows a person to build something on it, we cannot be like, oh, that's too small. Actually, you can't build on it. We can't create a bunch of unbuildable lots that are too small. We just can't. If you have a piece of property and it has zoning, then whatever is allowed in the zoning needs to be allowed to build, provided that it meets all setback and other dimensional requirements.
In practicality, you have a house and your house doesn't meet minimum lot size requirements. You're a legal non-conforming parcel. If you want to expand that legal non-conforming parcel, you can't do that. You have to go to the ZBA because you're expansion of a legal non-conforming use. So if you have a small cottage on a small lot and you want to add a garage, you have to go to the ZBA.
Okay. I, I'm not suggesting that you don't ever have to go back to the ZBA. I'm suggesting that in prioritizing and we're thinking about what rules to change, that messing with or otherwise adjusting the lot size to make more of them conforming is a less good strategy than adjusting the setbacks.
Right, I get that point.
Okay.
I understand that point. What I'm, this is the first time I've seen this clause.
Okay.
So what I'm, I'm trying to understand what you believe this clause means in our zoning ordinance. You're saying that this clause means that if we go and rezone, or excuse me, change, what, it's, just repeat again what you think this clause means.
I think that it means if we as a community have created a lot and zoned it in a zone that allows things to be built, then we have to allow something to be built on that property, even if it's technically too small.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Stanley-Chow.
First of all, some of these, some of these lots around the lake have been here way before any zoning laws were ever initiated in this area. So, you know, in reading some of this stuff, I, me personally, I don't think that some of these changes are going to actually clear up a lot of the problems for people or prevent them from having to go to the ZBA by doing some of this stuff because I think it would end up making, it would change certain things, but not necessarily make it easier for the person that owns the piece of property to do something different on it. I think that they'd still have to go to the ZBA. I know the intention is to try and make it so they don't have to. I'm not sure if going along and passing something like this is going to cause more issues for those landowners than leaving things as is and having them go and application as they need to, to the ZBA to get things clarified for what they need.
Oh, and let me come on to two of those things.
Okay.
The first being minimizing street-side setbacks could go a long way. The thing to remember there is there are setback requirements that are required due to roadway setbacks. So minimizing those street-side setbacks could absolutely go a long way. And from what we've seen at the ZBA over the last 10, 15 years, the, the side yard setback tends to be the biggest problem. I, I gotta be honest, this is the first time I've heard of a sliding minimum side setback. It's very intriguing. I, I, it is intriguing because I, I didn't think of it in the way of, okay, our current side yard setbacks in, let's say, SR1 are basically 30% of the lot size. Well, if I apply that same 30% to the lakeside lots, in proportion, I should get a similar, it's not going to be exact, but, but they're going to still preserve 30% of their, their lot width. I, I think that could help tremendously and what it allows us to do at the ZBA is to be more, the, the really tough thing at the ZBA, right, is, is we're trying to say, "What's the minimum necessary?" And, and it's, said necessary is a subjective term when you're looking at folks that are around the, the lake because, well, what is necessary? Is there, you know, economics that take place? Is there hardship? They didn't create this. Who did create it? And, and when you start looking at that side yard setback, this kind of says, "We recognize there's a problem. This is a, this is a solution that potentially could work if it's, you know, I, I don't know. Is, is sliding minimum side setbacks used anywhere yet? Or is this something that's testing the, the waters? Because i, if it is and we can, and the waters are tested and they work, by golly, you've cleared up, I, I gotta be honest, you've, you've wiped the slate of the ZBA for three quarters of what we've seen. But.
Can I, I have a comment. I'm just wondering, uh, when we took a look at, uh, the district's downtown, the downtown Whitmore Lake, Lake, so we have Whitmore Lake Downtown District, and we have the Whitmore Lake Waterfront District, we looked at clearing up some of the non-conformities around there, but it's, since it's form-based, it's 30%, you know, 30%, and all the 30%, I believe, could be on one side and the building could go all the way up to the, to the lot line on the other side, as long as you're maintaining that 30% free and open, I believe. Now, so I'm wondering if perhaps our Whitmore Lake District and Whitmore Lake Waterfront Districts would kind of be pertinent to using or, you know, we looking at that all around our lakes and in those areas that are SR2.
The other thing, I think, I, I'm still struggling with this section, but that aside, there are multiple areas around the lake. And so it's, I don't think there's, I don't think there's really, if we're going to do this, I don't think there's one Whitmore Lake Overlay District. I think that the, the configuration of lots, for example, in the Whitmore Lake Summer Home Subdivision, which is south of Whitmore Lake, is very different than the configuration of lots that are on Main Street. And the configuration of lots on Main Street is incredibly different than the configuration of lots on the north side of East Shore Drive around the lake. So there's some, there's some differences here that I think need to be taken into consideration. And I do think that on some of these parcels, minimum lot size becomes an issue. Because, because you have a minimum lot size for one zoning classification, and there's very different levels of development and sizes of parcels around the lake. That's just the reality of it. So for example, no one meets, I almost can guarantee you that if you drove up and down Main Street and you look at the parcels that are on the lake on Main Street, no one meets the minimum lot size. No one meets it. In fact, I'm not sure how many people meet the minimum lot size at all, period, around the lake. And, and so I think that, I think that, you know, just sort of first glance, kind of more investigation into the particulars of how the lake is really sort of structured differently in different areas might be helpful. But I, I, I need to get back to this section 36-900, non-conforming lots of record. What is confusing me is that most of the properties on the lake do not meet minimum lot size. If you don't meet minimum lot size, you have to go to the ZBA. The way I'm reading this, this seems to imply that you don't have to go to the ZBA. Am I reading this wrong?
I think you're absolutely right. We don't address minimum lot size at the ZBA level for any of our lake properties.
Right.
It's not something that has ever been brought before us because it's not something that, it was, it's an existing non-conformity, therefore you don't need, that non-conformity is not addressed at the ZBA level.
No, but an expansion of that non-conformity is...
No. The non-conformities that we address are side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks. We, I can tell you that the cases that are even here before us, we were not asked to approve the non-conformity of lot size. That was never something that we were addressing. The things that we're granting variances to are the specific side yard and front yard setbacks, occasionally rear setback depending on where the property is, but we do, but those cases, and maybe wrongfully, have not been presented to us by our zoning administrator as needing a setback for, or needing a variance for that because they're non-conformities of record in that front. Meaning that that non-conformity is going to constantly exist. We are not changing the size of the lot.
You're right. The more that I'm thinking about it.
Yeah, we're not changing the size of the lot.
You're, you're, the way you described that and explained it, it makes complete sense.
Okay.
The only, the only exception would be a substantial, depending on what the percentage of renovation is.
Yeah.
So if you start getting into something that's a substantial renovation, that becomes more, that gets into something of essentially new construction, then you're back to minimum lot size of record.
Well, and we have percentage, yeah, I mean, in our ordinances, we have percentage of, at what point do we not call this a renovation anymore, kind of thing?
Right, exactly. So then I, you know, now I agree and understand with where Leah is going with this, that it's, it's really more about side yard setbacks and rear yard setbacks.
There's actually one going on in East Shore right now. Somebody took out the whole structure and left the...
I know.
The shell of the house, and they're rebuilding the house from inside the whole thing, and they're just leaving the footprint the same.
Right. We're, we're very well aware of that.
By the way, that's not before the ZBA yet.
We're also very well aware of that. The other issue to consider, and I think that this is just semantics, I don't think that this really effectively materially means anything, but we're really not considering lots of record, we're considering parcels of record. Because there are all kinds of lots that are plotted within these summer home subdivisions. So when you're looking at your GIS, if you're looking at lots and not parcels, you may be seeing buildings over lot lines. And the other thing is depending on where you got your parcel or GIS information from, if you got it from the county, those are, that's not precise. So there are all kinds of buildings that look like they go over parcel boundaries that don't. But that's just a side, a side note.
Wait, let me stop you there because we use parcel data. So if the county is not reliable...
It's not, it's, it's, it's not reliable in the sense that it's a survey reliability.
No.
It's reliable only from a visual planning perspective. It's, you can see, you'll see a building or a house that goes over a parcel line, and you go actually out there and survey it, and it's not.
My rear lot line on GIS is about a foot and a half off.
Right, so...
It is.
Yeah, so it's, 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 it's not 100% reliable. And then the only other thing is, you know, so, yeah, that's it, I guess. The gist of it is, the most important thing is the Whitmore Lake is, doesn't consist of one district, it consists of probably three or four.
Can I ask how that would affect, so these recommendations are specifically, can I just ask how that would reflect, these generate recommendations, which were designed to be as, as non-restrictive as possible? So I'm talking about going, lowering the street side setback as low as you possibly can. Is there an area in the lake districts that, that would not be?
I think that's what you need to look at. I, I haven't thought about it, you know, to do the analysis, that's your role.
No, I just wondered if there was something in specific that you had in mind when you asked that.
No, no, I don't have anything in specific.
Okay.
You know, when I, I live on the lake.
Sure.
And so when I'm thinking of the lake district, I know that regulations in the Whitmore Lake Summer Home Subdivision are going to be different than elsewhere. Sorry, I'm going on and on.
Do we have anyone down here that has any questions or comments about the project, Mr. Roman?
Just a, just a comment. I'm not that familiar with the sliding scale issues, but you also have to take in consideration current building codes. There's a reason why there's no building side to side in New York City. So, you know, you could reduce something so far as to be in direct violation of a building type, which limits, it puts so much of a restriction on what you're building, it's not even feasible sometimes. But I just, you know, I'd have to look at it more, but just a consideration, something to think about.
Anybody else down there? Okay, Mr. Dignan.
I have two more quick notes. I understand what Mr. Fink's saying, such as the, that front yard setback is very applicable along Main Street and East Shore Drive and on Whitmore Lake. And maybe it could be argued even on Horseshoe Lake, but clearly on Wildwood Lake, there's no need to reduce those front yard setbacks for those roads. Those roads were plotted far enough away. Those homes fit right into the standard zoning. There's, there's not an issue there. You know, I want to make sure this isn't, you know, new, for newly plotted, newly plotted lots, that, you know, that's obviously a different story, but...
Well, but even for newly plotted lots, I think, you're not talking about newly...
They need to plot them far enough away from the lake. That's...
Yeah, but are you talking about newly plotted lots or new parcels on the lake? Or are you talking about new developments elsewhere?
New developments elsewhere.
Thank you.
Yeah. I, I do not, I, I'm not supportive of a changing of the lakeside setbacks myself. And I think we can have another discussion later on in regards to lakeside structures because that is something that's been out there lingering. Two individuals on East Shore do have, do have variances to put up a lakeside structure. They were granted a variance to put up a lakeside structure.
Like boathouses or what? What are they?
Well, not a boathouse, but, but a small shed to be able to keep lakeside stuff in so they're not, there, it was a safety issue, so they're not carrying it across East Shore Drive. Their kids aren't carrying rafts across East Shore Drive. You know, it came to us a while back, but it was, it was granted. It made sense. It was, but it was very limited in size.
How was on there when that happened, yeah?
Yeah, it was limited in size, but it made, it made perfect sense. And it was something that was enjoyed by multiple other residents on that same area. So, but I think this goes on the right road. I just am really interested in two things, and that is the sliding minimum side setback. Is it being used now? If it is, where? How's it gone over? And the other thing I might ask Mr. Michelle is, on the north side of the lake, which is our, our neighbors in Green Oak Township, how are they handling this? Because they do have lakeside properties on Whitmore Lake that are the exact same to some extent, not the Main Street area, well, yeah, on the Main Street even, exactly. So how are they, how are they addressing this? Or are they, are they just kind of one-on-one like we have for a few years? Thank you.
Excellent. Well, I was looking at our Whitmore Lake District downtown, and we have a, we have a front required building line. This is like on Main Street though, well, not on Main Street. This is in the, the other areas, I guess, Whitmore Lake. And it's 10 feet for the setback, which is a lot less than we're talking in there. And then they talk about lot coverage and, so I'm just wondering if something we've already done might have applicable portions to this. So, I don't know, just, just take a look at it.
Sure.
Okay. So that...
Can I just say thank you guys for, for going through this? This is something that's been kind of an important item to me, and I talked to Mr. Michelle about it. And I know the ZBA has been asking that we address it, so thank you for your guys' time on this.
Well, if we can do something to make it better for the residents without compromising the quality of our lake...
Exactly.
Then, you know, that's, that's a good thing. So we'll see what we can do. All right. Moving on to call to the public. Do we have anyone who would like to speak with us? Okay.
I'm still Craig Warburton, and I still live on Joy Road at number 450. I would just like to revisit and ask for your consideration on a couple of small issues. If you take out all the references to the secretary signing site plans, recording the minutes and the like, you have to specify by statute who is going to take responsibility for that. I would not want to build a house or build a project and at some point have a problem and then, you know, well, so-and-so on staff signed that. Well, they didn't have authority to, and you're left holding the bag. There's a certain accountability that comes with a site plan and a significant expense that is signed by someone in the planning commission. I'm chasing minutes right now from the early 90s that are really wonderful documents to read, and it predates the recordings and the like. And Mr., I think the secretary at the time was a gentleman named Balcelly. He was a very interesting man, and he always had a huge bag, a box full of minutes with him.
Jim Balcelly.
And meticulously made sure they were stored properly, and when I get copies of them, I really appreciate that. If you take out all the, all the specificity about who's going to be responsible for those really incredibly important records, and who's going to be the signature that authorizes significant expense and significant action, I think you have, if you're not going to, if you're not going to leave it with the secretary, which is where all the enabling documents would put it, then you really need to specify who's going to, or you're just going to say it's up to a random staff member to do that. And, oh, that was so-and-so, that was, that was John Doe, and he quit five years later, and we have no idea where those records are, and blah, blah, blah. And then in respect to Robert's Rules of Order, it's really funny, you guys. It has been the preeminent source for parliamentary procedure since 1875. It's used all over this country. You don't do awfully sophisticated business here that requires more than about two or three hours worth of reading in that book to really know how to handle it. If you just leave it as Robert's Rules, it really leaves everybody. I mean, a lot of what you're banding about tonight, who's gonna, who's gonna sign this or who's gonna take, a lot of that's specified, it's parliamentary. And you can decide to do it differently, and it'll only get questioned, but I really have, I have deep-rooted fears about, it's like taking out all the fiscal responsibility. You're going to designate that to staff. He has an accountability, he has to submit a budget, you guys cost money, there's expense here. It has always been attributed to the chairperson to control. I don't understand taking it out. It's sort of like having the minutes reduced to a mere tabulation of who showed up and how they voted. If you take out all the wonderful language that allows somebody to pick it up and know what happened, which is specified in the state enabling documents. Yes, it is. You know, we may, it also says you can settle that in circuit court, and that would be really, really nice to avoid. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from the commissioners? Do we have any comments tonight? We'll start with Mr. Roman.
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Kuzno?
No comment.
Mr. Iaquinto?
No comment.
Mr. Stanalacho?
I want to make sure that everybody keeps our men and women in uniform and their thoughts and prayers. They are allowing us to, by their sacrifice, to have these exchange of freedoms.
I want to thank everybody for the good discussion tonight. I very much appreciate the engagement, and I think it went well. Thank you, Mr. Dignan.
I just have one thing to kind of say to the community. The Whitmore Lake School District yesterday kicked off a fundraising effort to provide 60 computers in 60 days to the elementary school. It's a community fundraiser. The amount of money we needed to raise was specified, and it was exceeded by 40% in 24 hours. Not 60 days, 24 hours. This community stepped up and donated thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. And it's a wonderful thing to see. It's great. You know, we're continuing to do excellent, amazing things, and just wanted to say a big thank you to anyone out there who was a part of that. That's, it's nice to see, and those dollars will be put to hard work and will help the kids of the Whitmore Lake Public School System. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Well, wonderful. Yeah, that, I'm going to add something. You know, meeting with these groups, I have just found that people are just on fire for this community. I mean, they really love Whitmore Lake. So anyway, that, that's just a testimony. Great. All right. Announcement, our next regular meeting will be December 16th, and we do have a public hearing and potentially two applicants, and who knows what else that we can fit in there in some reasonable time. So, anyway, there we go, December 16th. We'll see you here, and can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Dignan, support by me.
There you go.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? Okay, thank you very much. Have a good evening.